Good evening and welcome to the February 12th meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone else in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, could we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? The first item we have is public comment, and we have three signed up for public comment tonight, which are limited to three minutes. The first one we have is Maureen Dubois. If you could come up, please.
Hi, Maureen Dubois, 15 and 19 Southbridge Street.
Could you just move that a little closer so we can hear you?
I have previously met with town officials, and I've been before this board on a number of occasions to discuss the traffic safety concerns between Elmwood and Jerome Ave. On Southbridge Street, you're all aware, I'm sure, of the new proposed big operation center that Central One is planning on putting in where they purchased the land from Elmwood Street out from the town. A number of the concern, the two big concerns out of this whole project are traffic and the entrance and exit on Elmwood Street. I have been speaking with and meeting with a number of residents, businesses, the DOT, the railroad, Pola, and all of the businesses, Atlas, Omni, all of those in that complex over there. Years ago, it used to be a 30 mile an hour speed limit, and the speed limit sign was posted on the south corner of Elmwood Street. There also was a solid double yellow line which didn't allow passing. That was changed over the years. I have no reason why, but I have brought this issue to everyone's attention numerous times. My understanding and the answer had always been that a traffic count was done, and that's the speed that the cars are going, so therefore it was up to 40 miles an hour. After meeting with DOT again, I have discovered the error that was made. I have handouts here if you want.
And we're happy to look at them at the end. We can't be looking at them while we're sleeping.
Right. So briefly, what that is, is there are what they call statutory speed limits, 20 miles per hour for a school zone, 30 miles per hour for thickly settled or business district. That also gives you the definition of a thickly settled business district. I believe this is where the error was made. From Elmwood Street north into the city of Worcester, and Route 12 hangs a left onto Hobav, that meets the deflation of thickly settled. So I can write all the letters, and I can meet with DOT, and we can do everything we want, but as a resident, we can't do anything about it. It has to be the town. The town is the one that needs to go to the DOT and say, "There was an error made." This speed limit is determined because of the thickly settled district definition, not because of how fast the cars go. Likewise, the double yellow line, which doesn't allow passing, meets the definition, and the guidelines are street width, number of vehicles per day, sight distance, et cetera. And there's also another comment in there about special conditions or something. So my issue with that is that you don't have, we meet the definition for the width of the street, the number of cars, the last car count that was done by the DOT was done at the Worcester Line from August 30th to August 31st, and the number of cars that went through there in a 24-hour period was over 11,000 vehicles. That does not count the vehicles that come north down Southbridge Street, turn into Pola, and then come out and head back up and go south. Out of that 11,000-plus vehicles, 700 of which were the various size trucks, the box trucks, the trailer trucks, et cetera. That's an awful lot of traffic. And when you have those 18-wheelers and those box trucks in front of you, you can't see, and there are too many cars that are trying to pass in that passing zone at 40 miles an hour. It's just, the conditions down there are ridiculous. And now with this incoming operation center for Central One, they're talking adding another 100 cars a day into this area. The town really needs to go to the DOT, really needs to address this. I have met with everyone. I have met with the railroad. I have met with Pola. I have met with the DOT. I have met with all the businesses and the residents. Everybody is on board with this. So I don't know what you need. If you need signatures, I will get you signatures. If you need letters, I will stuff your mailbox. If you need people, I will fill this room to overflowing. But we can't keep ignoring this and dismissing this. This is a serious issue down there with the traffic in this stretch, and it definitely meets the definition of thickly settled from Elmwood Street north into the city, which is why I believe that's where the speed limit sign used to be. It was there for a reason. You don't all of a sudden cross a town line or a city line and then make up a new definition. It's thickly settled until it no longer meets the definition of thickly settled.
What we can do is we can ask the town manager to work with the DPW director to contact Mass DOT and get a definitive ruling on this and get back to us. And regarding the application that's before, both Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals, it's my understanding that they have looked at that, and they are looking at an alternative entrance and exit that will be proposed in the future, and more than likely, the Planning Board will require a traffic study anyway. So we're going to get all of that.
That's being done in their meeting tomorrow night. That traffic study's already been done. I spoke with Central One today. They didn't have the report right in front of them when I spoke to them, so I'm aware of everything that's going on there. But the thing you need to understand is, you can't get there unless you come by here.
And that's what I just said, that we will reach, it is a state road. We will ask the town manager to work with the DPW director to get a definitive answer from Mass DOT and get a determination. We can provide them with the information that you provided to us, but they'll have to make a determination as to speed and, you know, the determination of what it's, what the area is. Briefly, Mr. Coyle, because we, I want to refer this out, it's not an agenda item tonight, so.
Sure, just briefly, one of the things I wanted to point out is Central Mass Regional Planning recently did a correlative study of this section, and I think within the past six months that was completed, so it may offer some valuable information. But in terms of the speed limit, the statutory speed limit, thickly settled, if you're in an area where it's not thickly settled, or if it's divided roadway, typically that's if there's no speed study done, those are your primer facia or your default speed limits. Certainly, I'll communicate with Mass DOT as to what they would require the speed limit to be. Typically, again, it's because there was a speed study that was done, but I'll reach out to them to get more information and report back to you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Plutukas. Mr. Plutukas, it's nice to see you. We haven't seen you for a while, but on our agenda, I'm sure you see, it says, "Specific Issue," so please, next time, write something other than "Auburn Needs," dot, dot, dot. What do you want to speak about tonight?
I want to thank the Select Board for all the time that they've donated to the town of Auburn. You deserve to be congratulated. It's, a lot of sacrifices are made by everyone sitting up there.
Thank you.
And Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. Auburn needs, in my opinion, a first-class grocery store experience. If we look around us, we can see Northborough and Shrewsbury have Wegmans. That has become an anchor store, and all the mall developed around it. If we go south, go to 146, Milbury and Sutton, first-class shopping experience. It's an experience, it's not just shopping. Same with Wegmans. If you go to Opton, you've got a price shopper there. It's not just a grocery store. They give you an experience in your shopping. And the mall that's developed around it, it again is an anchor store. Not a Macy's, not a Staples, but it is, they work as anchor stores. If, you go to Milford, and I suggest that if you're near there, go there. They've worked the last two years on Milford Crossing. You would not believe the amount of money that they have spent there, but it is now a mini-mall where Kmart used to be and failed. Again, the anchor store is what? A grocery store. Stop and shop with a first-class shopping experience. It's not just groceries. We have a couple of lots that are empty in Auburn where those could have been. That would be an ideal spot for a first-class grocery experience. There are people from Leicester that shop at Wegmans in Northborough, not because it's cheaper, but because it's an experience, a first-class experience, best of breed, and I think Auburn deserves that. The second suggestion I'm going to make might be a little controversial, but it goes along with having a walking district, and it might be entitled, "Guarded Circle at Drury Square." And I'll take an example from Westborough. If you haven't been in Westborough recently, drive through there and drive around their circle. Every road that comes into that circle has business after business after business after business. It seems that circle generates it. I lost count at 40. All walkable distance, all around that circle. When you can go around a circle twice, three times, it's not like a stoplight where you have to go down four blocks and turn around. I think it facilitates business. If I were to do it at Drury Square, I wouldn't touch the MCU corner, but I've got the fire chief mad at me, I wouldn't move the fire station, and I wouldn't move the other building, and I'd make it on that pond, possibly a first-class restaurant overlooking a pond. But these are ideas. That one might be a little controversial, but I think if you go to Westborough and you take a look at all the businesses around their circle, it'll be amazing. I think you'd be very surprised at how many there are. I didn't see any open buildings. I didn't see any for rent signs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. --
And again, thank you, Select Board, because you donate so much of your own time. I don't think people realize the burdens that you carry and all the studying you have to do to be prepared for these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you for acknowledging that, and I just want to make a couple of quick comments on that, you know, with the town manager. I know through the Business Roundtable, as well as Economic Development, you know, there has been outreach. I couldn't agree with you more. We need, you know, we would love to have, I work in my offices in Shrewsbury and have visited New Whole Foods a couple of times already. You know, we hear the cry for another supermarket. We can do outreach, we can try to sell Auburn, and we have been, and hopefully soon, you know, we'll, we'll have a response from one of these major markets. And, you know, I can ask the town manager just briefly, because time is getting away from us, but there has been a plan for the Drury Square project, and if you want to just give Mr. Plutukas like the 30-second version of what we've done.
I don't do anything in 30 seconds.
All right. So I'll extend it to 40 seconds.
No, 30, in 30 seconds. We do have a Drury Square vision plan that was done in concert with a number of residents and businesses, and we completed it in March of 2017. It's on our website. There are a number of strategies, one of which does include revitalizing Drury Square, getting better signage, wayfinding, trying to make it more attractive potentially for a restaurant. We actually talked about that in the plan on a parcel at the mall that they have identified for a restaurant, and if we can clean up the pond and fix up the fountain right behind the fire station, it will make it more attractive to businesses. So we do have a good plan. We just hired an economic development person, so we will be now working on implementing the strategies in that plan, including business recruitment, finalizing our economic development, marketing and collateral materials, and meeting with all of the brokers in town to try to promote Auburn. 30 seconds?
I think that's great.
So thank you for your continued involvement and coming before this board.
I thank you for considering guarded circle at Drury Square.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chief? You look like you're running to keep it under 30 seconds.
At your request. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I just wanted to let the public know that we will be holding another Citizens' Fire Academy this spring. The start date will be Wednesday, April 25th. It'll run for eight consecutive weeks, wrapping up the first week in June. The start, the times will be from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. All of the information can be found on our website, auburnmassfire.org, but I encourage residents to register now, and I would also, as I do every year, encourage any of the elected or appointed officials, Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Town Meeting Members. It's a great opportunity to get sort of that behind-the-scenes, behind-the-curtain look of the department, so thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. And before we move on to the next agenda item, I just want to announce that the representative of the Worcester Telegram has come into the room, and he is making an audio recording of this meeting in accordance with open-meeting law. The next agenda item we have is the opioid litigation multi-town contract. I'll ask Ms. Jacobson to invite our guests up to the table with us.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Attorney Richard Sandman, and if you'd like to come up and sit at the table with us, that would be wonderful. In your board packets, you do have an overview of the multi-town opioid litigation, and I won't go into the summary of what you already have here, but I will ask Attorney Sandman to just briefly summarize it. There have been several communities that have signed on even since this memo was prepared on Thursday, and just want to be clear to the town that this is an option that we can join into, and it would be at no cost to the town. The only cost would be if there were to be a settlement in the future in favor of the town or anyone else who was a participant in this lawsuit, that the town would have to pay legal costs out of that settlement. But until such time, if there's no settlement, there are no legal costs. So with that being said, Attorney Sandman, could you just summarize this for us?
I would be glad to. Thank you, Ms. Jacobson.
I appreciate you coming in.
Sure, no problem. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, members of the board. I'll try to keep my comments brief. It's a opioid crisis, it's a, it's in the news every day. No one is not affected, no community has not been impacted by it, so I can go on for quite a while, but I will not. I will try to keep this brief and then turn it over to questions. The litigation that I'm involved in, I'm doing with three, well, there are two additional local firms, mine, a firm called Sweeney Marigan in Boston, and KP Law, the formerly Copeland and Page, together with six national law firms, which include the largest, among the largest, most prestigious and successful large plaintiff practices in the country, Baron &amp; Bud, Levin Papantonio, et cetera. When you fight the opioid manufacturers and distributors, which is what we're doing, you'd better be well-funded, you'd better have a lot of people in your staffs, and you better be prepared for a fight, and I believe we are very well-positioned in all of those, in all of those areas. The litigation is to, as I said, directed to the opioid manufacturers and the distributors for various violations. With regard to the manufacturers, it has to do with negligence, misrepresentation, misrepresentation as it relates to the addictive nature of opioids. For the distributors, under the Controlled Substance Act, they're supposed to report odd, unusual, particularly large orders. If you have seen either of the two 60-minute presentations over the last two or three months, if you have not, I'd recommend that you find them. I can, if you contact me, I'll be glad to send you a link. In those, they give an example of a place in West Virginia, population of about 500, 10 million, something like 10 million pills went into that community over a two-year period. No community is immune. The data that I have for Auburn, I believe you had in 2016, 27 emergency response calls. I don't know how many of those had to do with taking people to hospitals. I don't know what percentage had to do with Narcan. I think you had one death, fortunately. It's unfortunate to have any deaths, but the numbers are pretty low, and you're controlling the issue pretty well from the sound of it, but it's still getting away from all communities. So this lawsuit is intended to do two things. Get you reimbursed for any past costs. If you have had additional funds spent, if you have funds for police and fire, for extra overtime, for extra policing and duty in certain locations for certain events, and we can identify and associate it with opioid epidemic, then that's something we're going to be seeking. We believe there's a correlation, actually, between opioid and heroin. We think the price of opioids is fairly high, heroin being so cheap, that is, there's a natural progression there. And I believe the facts, as we develop them and based upon what we know so far, will support that. So police, fire, any particular task force that you have, Narcan costs, needle exchanges, larger, some of the larger cities, I do not know if Auburn is self-insured with regard to workers' comp. Lowell, one of our clients, gave us an example that they have some people addicted because of injuries and then became addicted, and those are workers' compensation cases. So there are the past damages. The future damages have to do with abating a public nuisance, so being able to pay for educational programs, being able to treat those who are addicted, and putting an end to the crisis in other ways. Again, increase police, fire, et cetera. The litigation is all done under contingency fee. We recognize that communities do not have the money to pay lawyers. You pay lawyers already for other municipal law-related matters. This is on a contingency fee, which is, if we're successful, we recover funds. We recover funds for you, and the success could be measured in a couple of ways. Financially, dollars, it also can be measured in ways that you get a certain service, get a treatment center. And again, I don't know if this is appropriate for Auburn, but to the extent that you're also, you may also be provided certain services. If we're successful, we get recovery. We're going to spend money on the litigation. We're going to spend a lot of money on the litigation. I was involved in a water contamination case involving a lot of the communities around you, MTBE, recovered $100 million from Massachusetts. The costs were in the tens of millions of dollars. They were recovered because there was a settlement. With no settlement, there's no recovery. The cases are getting filed in federal district court, and they're getting consolidated in one court in Ohio. That benefits smaller towns. The reason being, you do not have to litigate your case right now in this community or in the state of Massachusetts. You cannot fight back. You do not have the resources to take on this case by yourselves. I don't have the resources, none of us, our nine firms, I don't know, would have the resources to take all the individual cases and to litigate them individually. So there's a consolidation. We hope that leads to some common understanding of the problem. We hope it leads to potentially a settlement. If not, the case comes back to Massachusetts and someday gets tried. We think the risk is minimal if nonexistent for you. Surrounded communities, Charlton, Dudley, Douglas, Lester, let me think, there's West Springfield, and I may have forgot a few locally. We probably represent close to 50 communities. We expect that almost every community in Massachusetts will be involved eventually. And I'm just going to look over my notes to see, you're in very good company, as I just pointed out. I'm realizing that the time is short, so I don't want to go in a direction that you already know about, so I'd like to open it up if you have any particular questions.
Okay, thank you. So first, I'd like to make a comment. Thank you for being here tonight, and this is something that I personally would support. I've served on the DA's opioid task force now for almost three years and see this, this work firsthand, and unfortunately, three years later, it still is at crisis level, and we do need to hit them where it hurts, and that's the manufacturers. I'll just say that our chief, two lieutenants, and our sergeant are all here, including our fire chief, but they see this every single day, the effects that it's had on Auburn. It may not be, you know, as many overdoses, but I believe, and I think they would tell you the same thing, what we're seeing is, and I would hope that you could get money for this, is we're seeing it in house breaks, motor vehicle breaks, where, you know, we have people who are desperate to make a quick, you know, 20, 40, 60 dollars to get through their night because they need a fix. And it's my belief, and the chief will correct me if I'm wrong, so we've got resources who are focused on house breaks and automobile break-ins. He's taken resources off of the street to assist with that. So I think there is some overtime involved, some overlapping of shifts involved, all, you know, and I think we could relate it all back to just people who are addicted, you know, they're, they're not horrible criminals. There are people who are addicted to opioids who just need to get that next, next fix. So I hope that that's something that you'll look at as well, the overtime in that manner.
The damages are a huge part of the case, and every city and town is going to be individually represented in that regard to maximize where your damages are, and I appreciate the comments with regard to the particular crimes.
Thank you. Does anyone, Mr. Bertheum?
In a, in a sense where every community is going to be represented, what are the possibilities of, you know, key people in our town being deposed? Do they have to, will they have to go out to Ohio?
No, it's an excellent question. It comes up often, actually. The, it's one of the reasons that we like the route that we're going. Because it's filed in federal court and they're all consolidated, what's going to happen in Ohio is a very good judge, and he's made some particularly good comments initially about the litigation. What's going to happen is, he wants the, all the parties to work toward resolving the issue right off the bat, and we realize you can't, as I stated a moment ago, you do not have the resources to put people forward, to answer discovery and put people forward for depositions. Now, if this case at any point goes to a trial, your particular location comes back to Massachusetts and goes to a trial, it's going to be a different story. That's years down the line, and part of, one of the issues in the fee agreements that I've provided, you can drop out of the case. So the control is yours, the case is yours. I think you're in good company, you're in a large group, you're in a multi-multi-billion-dollar problem going around nationwide, and again, you're in very good company, not just in Massachusetts. Massachusetts, the city of Boston has issued a request for information. We'll be submitting that. There's a lot of competition also for others that may choose to do that, other lawyers from other parts of the country coming in, but there's quite a, there's quite a movement going on, and it's a, it gains momentum. I think today, five more towns may be signed up. When I did a list up last week, we had 35, it'll be 50, will be a lot more before long, and a lot of larger communities that are, that are all looking at this, and we think will, will also join.
Anyone else? Mr. Lilliperty?
I know Sutton had actually signed on to this sometime last week, and I just had one quick question. So I see that it's basically suing for their liability because of negligence. So is this asserting that the opioid manufacturers knew about the addictiveness of?
They knew about it, and they actually coined the term pseudo-addiction and recommended that you treat the continued pain that you get and the continued drive that you get by taking more opioids. So it was interesting news today, Purdue, one of the largest, I think they, Purdue makes OxyContin, they came out today and they announced they're no longer going to market directly to doctors. The way the system works in the country is there are manufacturers, and they get it to the distributors, and the distributors are the ones that make the sales. So that middleman is a big part of the problem, too. We think a big part of the problem is the distributor network, and their failure. Distributors have paid hundreds of millions of dollars in civil fines already, 150 here, 70, they, to give you an idea of the size of the three largest distributors, McKesson, Amerisource, Bergen, Cardinal Health, they are three of the largest 15 Fortune 15 companies. Combined yearly revenue, $400 billion. They're not making it all on OxyContin and other drugs, but they're making it on, a good portion of it is from these medications. It's in their interest to keep pushing the drugs, and they're not reporting the suspicious sales. I don't know if I've answered your question. I hope so.
No, you did, thank you.
Anything else? So is there a request to take action on this tonight, or is this?
The board doesn't have to do this this evening, although it would be nice if you could take a vote. We were recommending that we do go forward and join on to this. We did run this by a town -- We did run this by a town council, Bob Henigan, who did look it over and feel that there was no negative impact to proceeding with it at this time, and felt confident in the quality of the legal counsel that was participating from Massachusetts.
Does anyone wish to make a motion?
For, to make it open for discussion, I'll make a motion that we join the group to join the lawsuit against the opioid crisis.
Is there a second?
One second.
We're in discussion, Mr. Berthium?
I just, you know, it is out of control. If, what we're hearing, that there's not any liability to the town, or very little liability, or no costs to the town unless the litigation brings income to the town, I don't see why we wouldn't take a responsible stand and join this and see if we can, if nothing else, scare the wits out of the manufacturers and distributors.
Anyone else? So, I'll, I've already said I would support this, but we may not see a financial benefit. As you said, we may see, you know, some type of offer for a facility, but even as far as I'm concerned, if there is no financial benefit, the long-term benefit of, you know, getting a handle on this opioid crisis, that's a benefit in itself, so.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify something. When I was talking about that, there can be a financial benefit and a benefit that's a particular service. It's usually, there's likely to be, if there's a resolution, there's likely to be a financial benefit.
But again, the long-term benefit is the easier of the opioid crisis and the stress it puts on our public safety departments, police and fire, so, has my full support. Anyone else? I'll call it a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thanks so much for coming in.
Thank you.
We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
We have no communications. The next item is a drain layers. Is there anyone here for that?
Through the chair, I may.
Yep.
On this next item, the drain layers, we are going to recommend postponing this discussion until March 12. The applicant is coming back before the sewer commission, I believe, on March 8 or 9, and has been able to secure some of the paperwork that was missing in the initial application. So, rather than taking a vote on it this evening, we'd like you to postpone it until after the sewer commission reviews the new information that's been provided and makes a potentially revised recommendation to the board. So, if we could just put this off until the 12th.
Okay. Is there a motion to put this off until after it goes back to the sewer commissioners for additional information?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Is there a motion to move, could I ask for a motion to move up Board of Selectmen Item 5E, vote to approve the Total Outdoor donation?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Ms. Jacobson?
Through the chair, thank you very much for moving this item up. We do have with us this evening Attorney Robert Longden and Drew Huffman from Total Media. And what you have in your package, if you'd like to come up here, Attorney Longden and Drew, and join us, that would be great. You do have a copy of the proposed donation agreement in your package. So, just by way of history, the town meeting in the fall approved of the bylaw amendment to the Regional Mall Overlay District to allow for the placement and installation of billboards at the Auburn Mall. That went to the Attorney General's Office for their review, as all zoning bylaws do. The Attorney General's Office approved that bylaw approximately a week or two ago, and it's retroactive until the date of the town meeting vote on a zoning case. So, it is an effective bylaw now. Given that, we wanted to bring to you the donation agreement. Now, generally, the, under the charter, the town manager would sign an agreement as a procurement agreement, but this is a donation. So, as a donation, the Board of Selectmen needs to accept the donation. So, we thought it would be appropriate for the board to take a vote to accept the donation and authorize the town manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the board. So, you have the proposed agreement in your packets, and just by way of summary, we had gone through this at the town meeting as well. But the Total Outdoor, Total Media is offering to the town of Auburn a total of $1 million over a 20-year period, with $250,000 of the first five years payable upfront. And that is based on a couple of conditions, and that be that all the permits are received to do this, and you're still in the permitting process, and that the installation is complete, and the billboards are completed and ready to accept advertising. And it would actually be based on a fee for per side because there are the four different sides.
Correct.
So, that $250,000 is actually representing the first five years. The remaining $50,000 annually would be paid from the fifth year through the 20th year.
For the 15 years.
For a 15-year period. And the, it also includes the donation of approximately four-by-eight electronic message board for us that we can use for any town-related information. We can, you know, similar to what's in front of the fire department. And it also provides for 80 hours per month of use for advertising time for, I think it's, is it 20?
Maximum of 20.
20 per side, 20 per face?
Not exceed five hours per operational face per month for a maximum total of 20 hours on all four faces.
So, 20, so 20 hours per month. And that can be for any, you know, not for business, but for any municipal-type use, events, any of our upcoming fall fairs or Independence Day, emergency use. The question had come up before, always with every billboard in Massachusetts, if there is an emergency, the state and DOT and can, police can get involved and post something on it. So, this is the non-emergency portion of it. And I believe, is that pretty much summarized at all?
Well, the freestanding sign, the four-by-eight sign, is going to come with a trailer?
Trailer, and the generator, and the controller. So, it's going to be turnkey, so it'll be fully operational.
So, it's mobile. You can move it wherever you want.
Yeah, it sounds like a great model. It sounded like one of the top models that you had.
10 millimeters is the best quality, so we're ordering the 10-millimeter.
So, again, per discussions with town council, this is not, we didn't negotiate any type of donation, just want to make it clear. This was a donation that was offered to the town by Total Media. We didn't negotiate to change any part of it. We just wanted to get it in writing so for future boards and future administration, you would know what was coming into the town. From our perspective, from the town administration perspective, Ed and I have talked about this, and we've said it publicly. We believe the best use, and we would recommend this in moving forward, and we don't need to make that decision tonight, but we believe the best use would be to implement the strategies and the economic development plan, as well as the Drury Square Plan, and focus some of those dollars, at least initially, into the Drury Square area to try to get some of those strategies into place. It would benefit the mall, it would benefit other businesses in the area, it could maybe help us create that aesthetically pleasing environment that we're trying to do to encourage future business development, to create a nice place for residents to go, maybe to make it more attractive for people who are at the library to look out and see a fountain that's working for people at the mall. You might be able to help get a restaurant on that site if you can fix up that area. And working with the town on some other ideas that we had for Drury Square, we think that this might be a good start. It is an unrestricted donation from Total Outdoor, but our recommendation would be that we believe it should be used for economic development purposes, that the town would not otherwise have the resources to do or would have to borrow to do it.
Are there any questions? No questions or comments. We have a recommended motion that was given. Is there anyone inclined to make a motion regarding this?
Sure. I move that we vote to approve the Total Outdoor Force donation to be used for economic development strategy information and to authorize the town to sign the donation agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion under the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Thanks so much for coming in.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
The next item is the fiscal year 2019 budget summary with a vote to transmit the fiscal year 19 budget to the Finance Committee in accordance with the town charter and bylaws. And before I turn this over to Ms. Jacobson and Mr. Kazanovich, I just want to acknowledge that there are several department heads here, as well as the Finance Committee Chairman, Mr. Hussy. So, if any members have any questions, they are here to answer your questions. Ms. Jacobson?
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Ed Kazanovich, the Assistant Town Manager CFO, to explain the budget. He's just going to provide you some highlights. We did provide this budget packet to the board last Tuesday and got everything together. So, hopefully you had an opportunity to look at it, reach out and ask questions, we thank. Those of you who did reach out with some questions, we always like to have the questions and want to have the opportunity to explain what is in there. So, I'm going to turn it over to Ed to just give the summary.
Thank you, Julie. Madam Chair, members of the board, tonight, we are publicly presenting the FY19 budget to you. In advance of tonight's release, we provided to the board about 10 days ago, on Friday, February 2, a summary form of the budget with the detail available to the board members on the following Monday. So, I'd like to thank those board members who had presented questions in advance of tonight's budget release. Provided to you also, as part of your budget books, we provided a seven-page transmittal letter, and I'm going to highlight some of the key points of the letter without getting into all the specifics, to give the public a sense as to where we are and what the budget is going to look like as it makes its way to finance. We are going to ask that you take a vote tonight to submit this to the Finance Committee. I've had discussions with the chair, and we'd like to commence budget hearings beginning on Wednesday, February 21, if the board so chooses to vote this to them tonight. The FY19 budget before you has a recommendation of appropriations of $66.8 million. That represents an increase of about $1.680 million or 2.58% over the current fiscal year. This process really began at the conclusion of the Fall Town Meeting, at which time we started building the budget based upon the final numbers of the FY18 budget, and also asked at a meeting on October 23 of this board their priorities for the upcoming year's budget. Over the last six weeks, we've met with the department heads and went over their budget requests to further, and further refine their, our budget priorities based upon their submittal, which led to our recommendation tonight. We believe this budget is, recommendation is sustainable, given the current resources that we're seeing, both on the revenue, general revenue side, as well as state revenue side, as well as the expenditures that are being recommended, not only in the general fund operating budget, enterprise funds, but also in the capital budgets as well. To highlight some of the revenue components, the tax levy in this budget utilizes approximately 1.55% out of a possible 2.5%. Given the budget recommendation, it would result on an excess levy increase of about $490,000, bringing out total excess levy just shy of $5 million. Our estimated new growth in this budget is, we believe is conservative, at $475,000, given our five-year average of about $701. Although, after having our chief assessor review the current permits, it seems like the bulk of the activity is residential in nature, and therefore are not willing to move off the $475 at this point in time. We will consider that when those values are known by the end of the fiscal year. That normally requires an adjustment at the Fall Town Meeting. I can tell you, our cherry sheet state aid, based upon the governor's release of his budget, yields an additional $987,000 to the town, made up primarily of two line items, an increase in Chapter 70 school aid of $881,000, as well as an increase of just shy of $60,000 in unrestricted local aid, a 3.9% increase. We believe these numbers will hold at this time, given the state projections on the revenue side, which is running about $800 million over current year projected. Given that, we believe that the Senate numbers and the House numbers that have yet to be released will not be any less than what the governor has put out there at this time. Our local receipt projections are up by $102,000, a 1.13%. These increases are primarily attributable to our enterprise fund accounts for the sewer department, Packard Shaw Golf, and cable access. Most other receipt line items in local receipts have been level funded based upon the estimates we've used and have been approved under the FY18 recap, recently approved by DOR. We tend to make some modifications and changes to this based upon the actuals that we will receive as of June 30. Once again, that's a consideration that we would make at a Fall Town Meeting. The available funds are down by $709,000, or 30.69%. That seems like a whopping decrease, but this is attributable to the free cash and the overlay surplus we use in the FY18 budget that is not being considered at this point in time. I can tell you, our debt exclusion is up $158,000. These are monies we raise as a result of voter approval for any debt exclusion or outside of levy limit construction projects. The two that we, that were approved by the voters of this community, that we're still paying debt and interest for Auburn High School, which we incurred debt beginning in 2004 with a 20-year purpose to be retired in 2024, and the recently constructed Auburn Middle School, which is in its infancy in terms of our debt and interest payments. We have a ways to go, a 20-year purpose on that as well. The revenue summary, we are recommending total revenue sources of $67,245,000, 931.42. That's an increase of just about $2.1 million over current fiscal year, or a 3.21% increase. In terms of the expenditure side of the budget, we do have new personnel. This budget prioritized a commitment to fund public safety positions, which represents one of the most significant core services that our town provides, and is integral to our community's quality of life. It is important to note that the school department administration, with the support of the school committee, reduced their original budget request in an effort to provide funding for these new positions. For that, we are grateful. Provided to you is a breakdown of the new positions in the FY19 budget, and this is coming from page 5, if you are following the budget transmittal letter. The fire department, we are recommending three new firefighter paramedic positions. This recommendation is a first step in looking at a long-term strategy to increase our funding levels, our minimum funding levels, from a current eight career members to nine career members. This is under the 24-hour shift. The money for one of the new positions is coming from a fire suppression line, starting 7-1, 2018. So, that really is budget neutral. It's just a transfer within the department. The other two positions will commence on January 1, 2019, to be paid from general fund revenues. Once again, a total of three new positions. Police department, the budget recommendation is asking for one new patrolman's position and one new communications director for dispatch. Department of Public Works, we are recommending one heavy equipment operator. And the school department's recommendation is requesting the equivalent of 10.40, full-time equivalent positions. They are a health teacher at the Auburn Middle School, kindergarten IA at Packard Shaw, preschool IA, two preschool IAs at Bryn Mawr, a child-specific IA at Bryn Mawr, two ABA assistants at Bryn Mawr, one nurse at Bryn Mawr, grade four teacher at Swanson, technology support position district-wide, and a BCBA district-wide position. and a BCBA district-wide position. In terms of other general fund fixed costs in the operating budget, we provided for all obligations relative to employee benefits, debt and interest, wages, insurance, fuel, utility costs, as well as other fixed costs that are scattered throughout the entire general fund operating budget. This budget provides for an increase in our group health insurance of 8%. Town administration will not know that level of increase until we get our renewals, which we are expecting hopefully in late March or early April. We feel confident that we should be able to absorb any unanticipated increase in cost through our expendable health insurance trust, which currently has a balance of roughly $8.5 million. Town administration in this budget continues a commitment to our annual OPEB appropriation of $500,000. And we continue to be strongly committed to funding stabilization in other reserve accounts, which we will consider at our Fall Town Meeting once the final numbers are known. Our capital expenditures, that will be addressed as a separate article at the annual town meeting. I can tell you that we continue to apply our financial strategies in terms of our capital program. We are 1/10 of our allowable Prop 2.5 is going towards our annual CIP. The level of tax levy to fund our FY19 annual CIP is now stands at just shy of $1 million, $991,000. In the remaining balance is covered through a variety of sources that I will identify as sewer retain earnings, $210,000; CIP trust, $25,000; cable access retain earnings of $18,051; receipt reserve, that's allowed by DOR for bond premiums of $90,000; $110,000 coming out of stabilization account, with the remaining balance coming from bond proceeds of $537,000, for a total capital request of $1,982,035. I provided to you a summary on page 4 of the departmental increases, as well as a school increase and any other appropriation that's being recommended in this budget. If you look bottom line, total increase of $1.679 million, or 2.58% over current fiscal year. Jumping to page 6, we provided a summary of expenditures by function of government. And I'll just highlight some of the high ones. Education represents 40.64% of the total recommendation, followed by employee benefits representing 16.32; public safety combined, that's police and fire, 11.42; and debt and interest of 9.43. So in summary, this budget is asking for total expenditures of $66,836,399.13; total revenue of $67,245,931.42. That would leave an unobligated portion of revenue of $409,532. If that is not appropriated, that would tax at a rate of 1.55% out of a total 2.5%, as I indicated earlier in the presentation. And given the outlook, we believe that this is a responsible and sustainable budget, given the current resources, while supporting the core services that are expected by the residents of this community. We will continue to minimize the impact on taxation as best we can and are committed to increasing the town reserves in implement strategies that will lead to current and future operational efficiencies. We are asking the board tonight to support this budget as recommended and vote tonight to forward this to the Finance Committee so they may begin their budget hearings and deliberations. Madam Chair, that concludes at least my comments relative to the budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this point in time.
Do any members have any questions or comments at this point?
Ms. Jacobson? Do any of your department heads want to speak to their specific?
I think probably at this point we'll wait for the Finance Committee meeting, but I want to thank everyone for coming tonight and also to just reiterate the real importance of the positions that we're requesting in this year's budget. We've been very conservative over the last several years. I think we've proven that we budget conservatively. We're modest in our spending, but we do have needs that need to be met. And it's clearly been identified, and we've been discussing this for a couple of years now, that we have needs in public safety and public works that have to be addressed. And if we want to continue to provide quality and excellent services that we do, we need to make sure our departments have the resources to do their jobs. And when the department heads before you ask us for consideration for new positions, we know they need those new positions. They don't ask if they don't need them. They've been very patient with us. We've tried to be cautious so we make sure that we come in with new positions and years that we can afford to do that. We know we can. We know this is sustainable. And we have to recognize and acknowledge that these department heads have specific needs that we have to meet. We have to make sure that we continue to protect our own employees, as well as the public, and service the residents. So I can't say enough about the need to support these positions moving forward. And we look forward to meeting with the Finance Committee. I see the chairman, Kevin Hussey, is here this evening. So we'll be able to answer any questions and explain any of these new positions or any of the other adjustments in the budget as we need to when we go through the process. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, one other thing I'd like to highlight, I think it's important for the board to know, as well as the general public, the level of commitment we made to holding down the level of taxation since 2011, leading up to the adoption of the financial policy. So I'm just going to rattle off a few numbers, but in a total savings to the taxpayers, and I know we present this at the annual town meeting, but I think it's important to underscore as well the level of commitment, at least we've made, to try to at least minimize the impact on the taxpayers of this community. So starting in 2011, and this is a level of taxation as it relates to Prop 2.5. 2011, we taxed at a rate of 0.92; 2012, 0.78; FY13, 0; FY14, 1.14; FY15, 1.39; FY16, 1.89; FY17, 1.23. Current fiscal year, and this may have been shaved by a couple, so this percentage may be off by a couple of percentage points, 1.25. For a total eight-year savings to the taxpayers, given our level excess levy of roughly $4.6 million, we saved the taxpayers over that eight-year period Prop 2.5 would allow us to tax that level if we wanted to. We didn't. So I think those savings are very important to convey to the general public. Given the presentation we made tonight, the excess levy may grow by an additional $460,000, which would increase their savings even more. So we do the best we can, given the resources we have, and we're cognizant of these priorities. And we will try to continue to improve upon that.
For the chair, if I can add to that just a couple of other statistics that I think are important to realize going into this budget session, that we looked back on grant activity. And since 2011, we've applied for 208 grants. And we've received 182 at over $3.5 million. So we are identifying and bringing in new revenue sources consistently. And want to thank all the department heads because every single department has been very aggressive with seeking and securing these grants. It helps us to do things with other resources that don't cost the taxpayer. We've also, in all this time, been able to grow the stabilization fund. It's now just shy of $3 million. And again, we can use that stabilization fund to fund one-time expenses that may arise that we're not aware of at the time of the budget. We've also started an OPEB trust fund. As you know, every year in the operating budget, we set aside $500,000 to go toward our long-term pension liability. And that was not there back in 2011. I believe we started that in '12, if not '13. And our free cash back in '11 was $271,000. And right now, it's $10.8 million. And that's critical because that shows that operational expenditures that we did not make in our budget, because we were able throughout the year to make savings wherever we could and to grow those reserves so that our bond rating increased. And our bond rating agencies gave us a level of reserves that we've now been able to achieve. And through the financial policy, approved by the board, approved by the Finance Committee, we've now been able to use the free cash for one-time needs and one-time capital expenditures. In the Fall Town Meeting, we did, for the first time, implement that policy and use that. So I think it's important to note that not only have we saved the taxpayers almost $24 million in not taxing to the limit that we've been allowed to spend at, but we've been able to increase our other reserve funds to protect the town and protect our liabilities moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So you jumped in here, and I had lots of notes here in front of me that I took as we had the presentation, so I may be repetitive. But first of all, thank you for providing the Board of Selectmen with our budget books early so we can review and have the opportunity to ask questions, but also to, you know, give us the opportunity to work with you on any budget priorities we may have. But I think what we're seeing here tonight is, you know, a result of the boards working together, the department heads working with you, the long-term financial policies that we have in place, the long-term financial strategy. Again, what you've just talked about, we are addressing our OPEB liability, long-term capital needs, and, you know, the ever-rising health insurance costs, which are crucial. But I was pleased to see that, you know, in the budget processes here, that the school department did look at their budget to work with the other departments to ensure that they had the staffing issues that they needed addressed. I know a few years back, we looked at full-day kindergarten, and there were some needs that were held off so that we could address the full-time kindergarten. And this just, again, shows the efforts of our department heads, the, you know, our lieutenants who work on the budget as well, assistant chief who works on the budget as well. Everyone is working together to best address the needs of the town to provide the best services to the residents. I appreciate it, and I look forward to passing this budget along to the Finance Committee and watch the real work begin because I try to attend those meetings. And that's where the real questions come in, and that's where the pen comes in. So, thank you. Do members have any questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we transmit the FY19 budget to the Finance Committee in accordance with the town charter and bylaws.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. So before we move on to the warrant, could I just request a brief recess and we can let our department heads go?
Motion for a five-minute recess?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in recess. We are back in session, the February 12th meeting. The next agenda item is under Board of Selectmen General Items. It is the May 1 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. And the first proposal would be to open the warrant for the May 1, 2018 Annual Town Meeting.
Make a motion to open the warrant for the May 1, 2018 Annual Town Meeting.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The warrant is now open. And another vote would be to close the warrant. We have a proposal to close the warrant for May 1, 2018, on Friday, March 2, at 1:00 p.m.
Make a motion that we vote to close the May 1, 2018 Annual Town Meeting Warrant on Friday, March 2, 2018, at 1:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
I just want to say something, if that's all right. Just so to inform everyone on the board through the chair. I plan to bring my research on the plastic bag and surrounding communities before the board at the next meeting and ask for a vote. If the board does vote, there will be time to put it on the warrant for town meeting, but that will only give us one meeting to discuss it and to decide to vote on it, to send it to this town meeting on May 1. So just to be clear with that.
So just under discussion, just because you just mentioned it. So is your expectation to vote to support an article in support of a plastic bag ban for town meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And we're going to have one presentation next at our next meeting?
Right, right, February 26.
Okay. And so I just want to be clear. When we have this presentation, when the board talked about it, it was to bring, you know, complete information so you have information on both sides for that? Okay. So we have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
For the chair, can I just add? Because I know the board has asked us in the past. So we did extend the dates. Generally, we keep a warrant open for a week or two, but I know members have asked us to keep it open longer. So we did squeeze it out to almost three weeks. And also, based on recommendations from the prior boards, we did notify all the Board and Commission members about two weeks ago that we were planning to bring this before you this evening to open it tonight and close it. So they were aware a couple of weeks ago, even though tonight's the night that you're voting on it. So everybody does know what the dates are.
Great, thank you. The next agenda item we have is gift acceptance in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. And the first grouping we have is to the, excuse me, Fire Rescue Department. The first from Thomas and Barbara McLeir in memory of Dr. Richard Weagle and the amount of $50. And Linda Klein in memory of Dr. Richard Weagle and the amount of $50. From Chester and Roberta Stensel in memory of Dr. Richard Weagle and the amount of $25. From Mary Horgan in memory of Dr. Richard Weagle and the amount of $20. From Robert and Elizabeth Wick in memory of Doc. Richard Weagle and the amount of $200. Then we have an additional one that came in from the Auburn Water District in memory of Doc. Richard Weagle and the amount of $500. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept with gratitude?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. And also, we have a donation from Mary Paglio and the amount of $20 for the Animal Shelter Fund.
Motion to accept with gratitude?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? So voted. The next item we have is from the Policy Subcommittee, an update on the draft code of conduct with a vote hopefully to be taken at the next meeting. Mr. Holstrom couldn't be here tonight. He had to be out of town, unfortunately, for a funeral. But he asked that members review this and, you know, come back with any recommendations or a potential vote at our next meeting. Mr. Bertham, I know you worked on this Subcommittee as well. Do you want to address this at all?[1734.33] Do you want to address this at all, add anything to this, or just let members review it for the next meeting?
No. I mean, the members can read through it. Basically, what we did was we had gotten drafts from several different towns. Mr. Holstrom and I agreed on one particular town that we used a good part of their Code of Conduct, and then just kind of took bits and pieces of our own and from the other towns to try to put a small Code of Conduct together. So hopefully, it fits everything we're looking for and isn't too overbearing. And just, if anybody has any questions, they can certainly let us know.
Okay. Do any members have any comments or questions at this point? So it'll be for our review and discussion and potential vote at our next meeting. Thank you for the work you did on this and the work you did as a Subcommittee. We have no proclamations. The next item under Town Manager Items is a vote to authorize the application, acceptance, and expenditure of grant funds of $3,500 from FFY 2017 USDHS/FEMA State Homeland Security Program Citizens Corp. Program Grant Funds. Ms. Jacobson.
Thank you, through the chair. This is a grant that we have been applying for annually for the last few years. It is, the application goes to MEMA, and the funds actually come from the State Homeland Security Funds that come through FEMA onto MEMA. And this particular program is specific toward needs of our CERT team. So working with our CERT team and with our Emergency Management Director, we've identified the need to replace a repeater system that went down and is not functioning right now that allows for radio communications for our CERT members during both their, during emergencies as well as during their drills. And we received a quote, it would be just about the $3,500. The grant is a competitive grant, but the dollar amount is provided to each community based on their population. So the maximum grant we can apply for is $3,500. The grant's due in a couple of weeks. Joe Shanat, who was one of our Assistant Emergency Management Directors and resident and very active member and very knowledgeable about radio systems, has been working with CERT. Mark Moss, our Emergency Management Director and Lieutenant Lemon, to look at the system that we have now. And they all feel that this would be a great use of the grant funds, should we receive them. So we should be putting that in within the next couple of weeks. So we're just asking for approval to apply for and then expend the grant funds if we receive them.
If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we authorize the application, acceptance, and expenditure of grant funds of $3,500 from the FFY 2017 USDHS/FEMA State Homeland Security Program Citizens Corp. Programs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you. Ms. Jacobson, the Senior Center Program Survey?
Yes, just wanted to let you know that the Senior Center Director, Jean Boulet, has launched an online survey. It's also available in hard copy at the Senior Center. And the intent of it is, we're trying to encourage seniors to take this survey, to let us know what you think of the existing programs we have at the Senior Center, what programs you think might be missing, what times or days are better for seniors for attending these programs. And then we're going to gather all this information, and it will help us moving forward to determine if there are gaps in our programming, if there are programs that maybe aren't as popular, we want to try something new. And it's really an ongoing process to try to find out what programs appeal to the seniors because things do change over the years. So we do have this survey. Again, it's online. We're using Survey Monkey and our People GIS form, so it's really easy to fill it out online. It can also be done online at the Senior Center, using the equipment there, or someone can help you fill it out. So we're just asking for seniors to encourage them to take this survey.
Great. Thank you.
And by the way, I did include it in your packet so you could see a copy online. It is laid out a little differently than it prints here, but it's an excellent survey. And Jean worked with the IT Director to develop it, so we thank them both.
And I would actually just comment that it appears to be very user-friendly for seniors, so I'm sure they appreciated that. The next item is the Charter Communications Rate Increase. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I scribbled over it because I knew I was doing that next. The Swimming Pool Feasibility Study Contract Award.
Great. Thank you. Just to let the board know, as you know, we received a grant from the Pappas Foundation, from Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas Foundation, for $30,000 to fund a feasibility study for a town pool. While we were not required to go under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30b, engineering and architectural services are an exempt activity, we did seek three quotes, just to make sure we were getting the best value, and we received two proposals. And after careful consideration, we are awarding the contract to the BSC Group. They gave us an excellent proposal, and it came in a little less than the $30,000. It came in at about $20,400. And we are in the process of developing a contract with them to get them under services. And then they will start the, under the RFP that we put out, Request for Quotes, actually, RFQ, we asked that the whole study be concluded in six months if possible. So that's the timeframe we're looking at once we get this contract signed. So just wanted to let everyone know, we did choose a firm. They're excellent. They've done work for us before. They have a good portfolio. They've done similar municipal feasibility studies. So we're looking forward to that. And wanted to, again, publicly thank the Pappas Foundation for their donation to allow us to get this feasibility study done. And there'll be plenty of opportunity for public input. And that was a big part of the request for quotes. We want to make sure that the firm, BSC, is engaging the public, soliciting their input, having a series of public meetings and opportunities to comment as we go through the process, and then to come up with a proposed financial analysis of what it would cost the town and therefore the taxpayers if we were to go forward with something like this.
Thank you. I know there's been a lot of interest in that, and I'm glad to hear that there'll be an opportunity for public participation.
Yes, there will.
And so now to the Charter Communications Rate Increase.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a mention of this this evening for a couple of reasons. We had received a couple of inquiries as to the rate increase on the basic services and some of the other charter fees. So in November, a letter was provided to the town as the contract awarding authority per telecommunications law to notify the town that there would be a rate change and a rate increase. It is the responsibility of charter to notify their customers within a certain amount of days, which they had done. The rates, the new rates became effective February 1. We did receive a question from a resident wondering if the Board of Selectmen or the town had approved of this rate increase. So I wanted to bring it up tonight because I want to make it clear, the Board of Selectmen or the town manager have the authority to approve rate increases. Under the Federal Telecommunications Act, as well as the state law, that authority lies with the Department of Telecommunications and not with the local authorizing authority as far as signing in the contract. So the board and the town manager cannot control the rates. It's state law and federal law that we can't have any influence on those rates, but customers were notified of those rates.
Great. And do you have anything else for tonight?
I do not. Thank you.
So there are no tabled items. We have no Board of Selectman member items, unless anyone has anything? I can, I don't think I have it. I'm happy to mention it. So this is just an announcement that there is a law enforcement appreciation night, the Boys' Varsity Basketball Game, Tewksbury versus Auburn. It is this Friday, I'm sorry, this Thursday, February 15, at 7:00 p.m. at Tewksbury Memorial High School. Thank you, Mr. Bertham. And just under Board of Selectman member items, I'll just mention that on our next agenda, we will have a discussion on the May volunteer recognition. Mr. Carpenter did ask me to put it on the agenda tonight, and I'll be honest, I just didn't get it to Sharon, so we need to get to work on that. May is right around the corner. I know that we had, you know, a successful event the first time we did it, but it needs to be tweaked a little bit, and we want to get to work on that. So we'll be doing the, going back to the original plan of doing the volunteer recognition the first week of May during National Recognition Week. So just look for that on our next agenda, Sharon. Thank you. Is there any additional? Mr. Plutukas, additional public comment?
Well, Plutukas, 231 Milbury Street, Precinct 1. I'm happy about this swimming grant. And as you know, I have spoken, swimming is a life skill, unlike baseball, which is a sport, and football is a sport. Swimming can save your life, and it's very important. It should be taught in the schools. I think it should be part of the graduation process. And it's just a personal feeling. I am concerned with not sending communications to charter. I believe that even though we don't control the rates, we should be in communication with them and mention what gripes our citizens have. Fifteen years ago, a senior citizen could get cable rates at a reduced rate. Somehow, that disappeared. It was $10 a month. So if someone was retired for 20 or 30 years, and their pay was, hadn't been collared, unlike my own, which is, they might be in some financial straits, and the cable going up to $70 a month, a 700% increase over their $10 bill, was quite a shock to them. I think we should object to that. Even though we can't control the rates, part of your job is to jawbone and to send the complaints of the citizens to these committees for them to consider it. And if they get enough comments like that in writing, they may actually think about putting it on their agenda and doing something about it. I think that there should be a special rate for senior citizens, especially if they're only on Social Security, and they've been here for, you know, it's not going to keep up with inflation, that's for sure. And it should be a rate that doesn't change and they can always go back to. A few years ago, a friend went off of that as a senior citizen, the basic rate. And when we tried to go back on it, they said, "You can't do that. Once you're off it, you're gone. You can't go back to that lower rate." I don't even think they offer it anymore. I think that's wrong. And I think part of what we need to do as a town is to express the needs of some of these people who have been retired for a long time, especially for older women who don't get the Social Security that probably their husband got. And when his pension went and they were left to live on what they had, they spent so many years raising the children that they're not going to get as much money out of Social Security. So that $10 a month for the basic channels might be something very valuable to them. So I'm just suggesting that we write letters. They may throw them in the basket, but at least we've made the effort. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Plutukas, for your thoughtful comments. And it will give me the opportunity to address this. I couldn't agree with you more. You know, if people want to address their concerns to the Board of Selectmen, I just want to stress that when comments and concerns are brought to the Board of Selectmen, we are able to respond. And there have been times that petitions, et cetera, have been brought to the Board of Selectmen, and we have referred them to the appropriate person. And so I just want to remind people, because we all live in the days of social media, a campaign on social media where, you know, we may hear like, "Oh, people are talking about, you know, the cable rates," or "the fact that we don't have a swimming pool," or "the potholes in the street." Not all of us are connected to the social media, and that doesn't come. And this isn't to you. This is an opportunity to address this. Those aren't complaints to us. It's kind of people going back and forth on social media. So if you do have a concern, if you do have a complaint, please, you know, our emails can be found on the website, or calls can be taken at the Managers Office/Board of Selectmen Office. But because people are talking about something on social media, don't assume that it's been brought to our attention. But I thank you because we would appreciate letters and comments or a phone call to say, "You know what? We'd like, you know, if you get enough of them, we'd like you to bring this issue to Charter Communications, or bring this issue, you know, we're getting a lot of scams. Just let the Attorney General's Office know that, you know, we've received 100 phone calls on this issue." But just, again, don't assume that we're aware of an issue because it's out there on social media, so.
Well, I agree with you. And I got a call from one of the energy companies recently that said, "Your electric rates aren't being protected." And I said, "Yes, they are." I says, "They're being protected by the town of Auburn." "Oh, no. Oh, no. We can give you lower rates." And I says, "What is your price per kilowatt?" Well, they weren't expecting that question.
Yeah.
Didn't know what to say to that one, and they came up with 13 cents per kilowatt, and they says, "As much do I." How much can you lower it? Which is something I'd like to see with the Town Aggregation Program. How much money have you saved the residents? I think you've saved them quite a bit of money.
Yeah.
How much money is it? You know, the number of people, compare the rates of national grid with what you're offering, and you would actually come up with a number that you could say, "We've saved the residents." It's not a bad idea.
Right. I think, if I may, through the chair, I think our first year, we had done a calculation at the end of the first year, and we had saved approximately $20 to $25 a month on the annual residential electric bill.
For a woman on Social Security that's been there for 20 years, that's a gift. She's not counting the pennies. Do I buy food, or do I buy my prescription? I mean, this is real money to a lot of people.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it.
Have a great day.
You too.
And again, happy Valentine's Day.
You too. Thank you. We have the minutes of January 22, 2018. If there are no corrections or omissions, the chair will accept them as printed. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.